...four dollars a year. That's still going to be tough for some people.
It's actually four hundred and fifty dollars.
Four hundred and fifty?
Yes.
So we're talking roughly two hundred and twenty-five dollars a year?
A half.
No, that's a year, correct?
It's a year.
A year. So two hundred and twenty-five dollars a year at half, just so you can see the scale here on what you're deciding and the burden on people. So one hundred and thirteen dollars a half. So I just want to leave you with that. In Amherst Township, the trustees are supporting this project for many reasons. It gives the property owner the opportunity for a twenty-year assessment. We have to recognize the health department is going to go ahead and enforce their duty. We know that. So we're trying to minimize the financial burden on the residents, to the point of the people that absolutely can't pay it. Those seniors. I certainly hope that no one is going to order the sheriff's department to go over there and drag them out of their homes. If they do, to any of the residents in Amherst Township, call me, I'll be there. And you see the press sitting over here, call them, they love photo ops like that. So I want to leave you with that. I think it's simple. Approve the project, decide how much you're going to fund it in Amherst Township. Carlisle Township, I hope their representation will speak how they want to proceed on theirs. Thank you.
Thank you very much Neil for your comments.
Commissioners, I would be remiss if I didn't point out, and I, the cooperation from Amherst Township and with our administration, sanitary and county health department's been absolutely stellar. But there's a lot of people tapped into that Obolyn line. And if the commissioners start picking up funding costs for putting the laterals in, other than participating with possibly reducing interest rates and things like that, this, I think you're going to open the door to a whole host of possibilities for the people already paid to tap into that line.
Are we going to reimburse them?
Well, you know, you heard one gentleman here two weeks ago indicating that very thing. There is a lot of, now, the potentiality on East River is less because there's only two people currently using the line. But I believe there is, Wayne, how many people are currently tapped into Obolyn Road Sewer?
About ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven people already on the line. Now, the one gentleman was here. I got to tell you, common sense would tell me that if I'm sitting next to my neighbor and I had to pay for my lateral and he just got his for free, I'm coming to see you. So it may well be better that we just walk away from this project, which we don't have that much invested in it, and just let it to chips fall.
I agree.
I think I just heard the county, or the township trustee requests the board of commissioners to approve this project.
He did commission, and that was his recommendation, and I respect that recommendation.
I think that was a recommendation of their board.
It was a recommendation of their board. I was there that night when they made that unanimous decision. But once again, on behalf of what we're talking about here, to you as your administrative people, we're at the point now where it may just be economically better for the whole county, for the county to walk away from this project and let the people deal with the health department and their issues individually.
Yeah, this is going to have to be paid out of general fund money. And that money is the entire county's money, not just one district. And then you've got ninety-seven people, like you said, and that's what I asked before, how many people are already tied into these lines? Ninety-seven? We're going to go back and reimburse these people too? How much is all that going to figure into it?
Each and every time that we've started talking about the economics of this project, the economics have gone up to the general fund. The, so, there's no end in sight. The engineering, we don't have a lot of engineering money out on this project. Again, it wouldn't be substantial for us just to shelf the project.
Is it responsible? That would be my question.
Well, Commissioner, I mean-
I think that's a good question. I don't think it needed an answer.
Thank you.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes, I'd like to speak on behalf of my clients and also hopefully answer a number of the questions that have been brought up and make some comments. First, to my knowledge on the Carlisle situation, there's no EPA mandate telling them, compliance order. EPA is always involved in any project that deals with sanitary sewers. So they're not directly involved, there's no EPA mandate, but they can always step in. The comment by Jerry Ennis is correct. Any higher authority, which would be the state or the United States government, EPA, anything that would be agreed upon is going to be subject to enforcement orders if they so desire to do that. So from my client's perspective, I can't guarantee and I can't get a binding thing to prevent the Ohio EPA or the US EPA from coming in. But I can, with the agreement of the local enforcement officer, the health department, bind them unless one of those two agencies come in and force them to do it. And that's the risk that both situations and residents are subject to. The issue of disagreement that has been negotiated and discussed with Amherst, obviously, the health department must have had some comfort level that if they were able to do this with the seven-year amnesty period, with guarantees and assurances that if the system is failing, they have to correct it or tie in if it was operating. They must have had a comfort level because they're in the business, they have to deal with the EPA's, both of them, the Ohio and the US, that if the system was that, that the likelihood of the enforcement coming from a higher authority is less of a risk. So they must have had a comfort level with that seven-year program that was negotiated between the Amherst people and the health board. The situation about Carlisle, well, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. I think that if for some reason my clients don't get that, there is something called the US Constitution and Ohio Constitution, equal protection of the law. So I think you have a serious problem, and I'm sure Jerry can advise you of that. We just want equal treatment. I think the approach of the amnesty and what they worked out is a reasonable situation. You know, the health department, for thirteen years, you know, if it was mandatory, seems like for thirteen years, if it was that mandatory, they didn't do their duty. In Carlisle, it's been four years. So it's only mandatory if you go through the proper steps. The accessibility issue, you know, you can read the statute, it says accessible. There's case authority that says that if the financial hardship is so serious that they're not accessible. And if that issue ever came up, I wouldn't have a problem in litigating it. The issue about availability and accessibility, the gentleman who talked about the laterals, there's no laterals, so how can they be accessible? There's nothing coming to those property owners' line that they can tie in. They don't have an easement or a right to go into the, right away to construct something, they don't have a contractual right. So they're not accessible yet. They should have been put in when you put in the improvements. And why they weren't done for both of these projects defies logic. And this is an abnormal situation. When you put in a main sewer, you bring it to the property line. The situation with the Carlisle people, they got a bigger tie-in cost. They got a two thousand tie-in fee and a six hundred permit compared to the city of Lorraine. I think it's about five hundred dollars for the Amherst people, so they have a bigger financial burden. The comment that was made that the residents asked for this, I looked through the file. I haven't seen one letter in the Carlisle people that are being assessed saying that I want to get assessed and I want sewers on my property. So I don't know where that came from, because clearly it's not in the file. The two people that are tied in on the Carlisle sewers, they didn't pay for it. My understanding that the builders, Mr. Yost and the other individuals, put them in as part of it. So they're not being assessed, so there's no refund issue with that. You got to look at the financial costs. We're talking about just the assessment only. For the Carlisle people, they got twenty-six hundred dollars, six hundred permit, two hundred tie-in to the city of Liria. They got to close down their septic system, that's going to be a thousand, twelve hundred dollars. And they got to do laterals from their property line to wherever the tie-in is that they're going to do. And that's forty-five, fifty dollars a linear foot to do that. And if there's elevation problems in the design of this, because they didn't put those sewers deep and because some of the properties on the west side of East River are lower, they may have to put a pump station in. And I've seen costs, sometimes on other projects, be thirty thousand dollars for somebody to tie in because of the elevation and the distance. If you're two hundred feet back from the street, you know, you're looking at a substantial amount. So it is a financial burden. The agreement that was made with the health department on Amherst, I made a couple modifications. I agree with Commissioner Moore. I don't think that this should be a financially based basis. I mean, look at the numbers I'm talking about, the tie-ins and the lateral costs, okay? I mean, that's a financial burden. They can't spread those. They're going to have to pay those immediately. They're going to have to pay the laterals cost. They're going to have to take out a loan or something, because they can't assess those. The only thing they can spread out is the assessment amount. So it is a financial burden. You know, assessment over twenty years, it'll help, but it's still not going to eliminate all of the financial burden. The issue about the systems, I modified this slightly, okay? In the sense that, you know, if the systems are failing, then the property owner has the option either to correct it if it's a minor thing, or they have to tie in in ninety days. There could be just some minor things as far as why it fails, as far as the different tests they do. A property owner, if it's going to be costly to do it, is going to basically tie into the system, just on pure economics of the system. So it gives a situation where there's some minor things that can be corrected with nominal costs. It gives the property owner that decision capability to put a Band-Aid on for seven years. I also modified or changed one of the provisions that dealt with transfers, okay? Very common situation with property owners, death in the family, goes from the husband to the wife, or gifts, or they set up a trust. Not every transfer shouldn't trigger this necessity of tying in. So I modified that to provide for transfers within the families, not triggering that situation. As far as the notice provisions, I mean, one of the provisions in the agreement that was discussed with Amherst talks about deed restriction. So it's going to be of record. So anybody who sells the property, when they do a title search, it's going to come up on a title search and they're going to show that there's deed restrictions and that this property is subject to this agreement and that on June first, two thousand and twelve, no matter what happens, they're going to have to tie in. But on behalf of my clients, I'm here because I think there's been a great injustice done to my clients. They could have, in essence, four years ago, been able to tie in if this was done properly, like they do universally, put the laterals in when they do that. And if you look at the assessment costs currently, there's thirty-nine hundred dollars for maintaining traffic, there's legal representation, administrative costs, project resident representation. If this would have been done at the time that the main interceptor went in, those costs could have been eliminated or substantially reduced. So rather than paying forty-nine hundred dollars if it was done properly and done at the right time when it should have been, their costs would have been lower. And the twenty-five hundred dollars that we indicated in our proposal doesn't give them a bargain. And to answer Commissioner Vacy's question, well, we're sitting in precedent, no we're not. We're just putting my clients back to where they would have been if they would have been put in four years ago. You know, the people who benefited from this project, okay, the builders and the developers in that area who needed that in order to put subdivisions, okay? You know, they got a big bargain. And it's being put on the backs of my clients. And the proposal that I'm offering, yeah, we like to get a hundred percent. If you're going to, if the Ohio, if the local board of health is going to mandate these people to tie in immediately and they're not going to offer the seven, then I want a hundred percent. But if you're going to do the seven years, you know, we're willing to compromise. If not, you know, maybe two years before this gets in.
Sure, you said-
But I think that's fair.
You said one thing. You said that no lateral, not accessible?
There's no laterals from the main sewer.
So how could the health department force them to tie into something that's not there?
Well, if they enforced it, I'd be in court arguing that and I would contest it.
So maybe, so maybe these people, actually, it's a favor to them, that there is no laterals.
Well, of course it is.
But I think the health department says if a sewer goes in front of your house, then they say that you can tap in. Do you think they're arguing?
Well, that may be, but-
I know, that's a legal discussion.
That's a legal issue and we can litigate that one.
Right, but let me go back to what's really at hand here. Jerry, can I, regarding this agreement, this agreement has nothing to do with the commission- We have nothing to do with this agreement. I was just trying to help to get it worded a little differently, a little better for the citizens. And it sounds like your clients don't have an agreement at all.
Well, we weren't aware of the fact that there was negotiations, but we want equal treatment, so-
I know, but see, we don't have any say in that agreement then, okay? I'm just letting you know that. So if we do vote today, you're going to have to work on your own to get that agreement, okay?
Well, we'll be in court then.
I know, I'm just saying that. I just wanted that.
You know, you want to give some additional time to work that out, that's fine. But I think under the circumstances, you know, there shouldn't be any preferential treatment, and I'll enforce my client's rights.
All right, but that's something that's-
So if you want to table it so that the Carlisle trustees work out an agreement with the health board, identical to the Amherst, then that's fine.
I don't think we have to table it for that. I think you, like you said, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. I think that's nice legal jargon.
Commissioners, you know-
I don't know if that's legal jargon, but-
You know what I'm saying though? I think there's a precedent and I think, but that doesn't have anything to do with the commissioners, that agreement.
Commissioners-
Does that make sense, or?
Commissioner, Mr. Phillips indicated that there was no person written into the record that came in and discussed the sewer with us. Clarification point, I believe all three commissioners here, when that lady came into this hearing-
Ms. McCarter.
And spoke to us, just for your own edification, Mr. Phillips. The other thing is, the county did-
What was her name?
Ms. McCarter. I don't know if that hurt.
She's not on the list. What's her address?
It's the house on the corner. I think it's been sold. McCarter was the name at the time. They were trying to sell the home and they couldn't sell it and they were having a problem.
Well, that's because we have a problem. Recently, I became aware of the fact that one of the residents in the area tried to sell the home and the board of health wouldn't do an inspection to permit the transfer on FHA loan.
The other issue is that the city of Liria put the sewer in. And like with the Obolyn Road Sewer, if, deferring to Mr. Phillips' legal judgment that the sewer is not accessible, once again, it may very well behoove us, commissioners, if we don't have a lot of money invested in this project. Sewer's not accessible, let's just drop the project.
That's what I said.
Okay. And then, Mr. Phillips will have to deal with the health department. He's made some credible arguments. He believes that his positions are correct on behalf of his clients. Let him deal with the health department. We don't have that much invested and it's not that important to us.
Okay, well, so are you calling for, well, so these people are going to be left to litigate for the next couple of years?
Do you want to hear some gentleman?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name's Michael Silver. I'm an attorney. I was here for Mr. Carey, who I believe wrote a letter to the county commissioners requesting financial assistance. I've spoken with him on the phone several times. I haven't met him. I'm not sure he's here today. Okay. No? Oh, is he there, Mr. Carey? Glad to meet you. I wanted to simply point out to the commissioners that there was a comment made earlier that there were promises made as to the people for the granting of these easements, but nothing was in writing. Mr. Carey took the precaution of getting a promise in writing years ago, when he did give an easement for the project. And that promise essentially was that he would not have to pay to tap in. So to the extent that that affects, I guess, the equities of this, which is on this entire community, I'm not part of this community, but I'm listening to this today. I just wanted the board to consider that, that he does have a written promise. I can produce that if we need to. Mr. Carey may have already given it to the board. And a suggestion also, it seems to me that if there's going to be an agreement with respect to these projects, where there's going to be deed restrictions of record, that certainly is going to lower the valuations. If I, as an arms-length buyer, am not going to want to pay the same amount for that property with a restriction on it. It would seem to me that those properties would be properly taken to the board of revision the next time your tax comes around.
Sir, do you know who that deed restriction was received from or given to? That in the agreement, it indicated he would not have to pay?
It's a writing. Your question is-
Who sent it?
It was Ida Henry.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me.
I would be interested.
I'll be glad to provide what we do have to the board, though.
Thank you. Bill, you have more comments?
I just have a couple of comments, if you indulge me a little bit. I testified last September and gave credit to the commissioners and to the county engineer for doing something I thought that was really good. We are in an unenviable position of needing to enforce the law. And that doesn't make us real popular with people. But we've been trying to do that for a while on this particular situation. And it's come to the point where we had to notch it up one. And so this project, what I'm hearing right now concerns me a little bit, because we're talking about scrapping the project. Scrapping the project is going to hurt a lot of people.
It's going to pull your trigger, right?
Well, I'm just giving my perspective. Because then they're going to have to pay when we get through two years, if we end up getting through two years of legal stuff. That's not my responsibility. Eventually, we're looking at the idea of those people paying out of their pocket today, going to the bank and borrowing that money to tie in, to pay those assessments, to pay for those fees. In addition, again, we're in a position from, again, the way I see it, you're saying that those sewers aren't available because there are no-
Laterals.
Laterals across the road. What about the people that are on the side of the road that has a sewer? So again, what we're doing is we're kind of splitting this all up, when I thought the county engineer had a great idea. When you hire one person, as Januzi would talk about, when you hire one person to do this job and do a lateral, it's very, very expensive. And the county engineer's office got together and said, hey, let's do it all at once, save everybody money, put it on an assessment for over twenty years, spread it out, make it easy. It's a bitter pill, but we're going to make it as easy as we can for everybody.
Is the health department willing to pay those costs out of their budget? Everybody's willing to take it out of the general fund budget. I don't see the health department here wanting to pay for it.
No, 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 no. I think there's, we've kind of shifted our argument here. The project I'm talking about that was proposed by the county engineer said we're going to do the project jointly and spread the costs out evenly among the people. I've never heard anything until recently about anything else.
Well, it's, you know, there's been, every time we talk about it, it mutates into something else.
Right.
And, you know, I hear legal arguments in here that the health department has no standing to require these tap-ins. So if you defer to that good legal advice, there's no reason for us to be involved in that project.
I wouldn't, I'm not an attorney to argue that point.
Nor am I, but I listened to an attorney here.
Well, I think that's why there are attorneys for both sides and a court representing each side of the issue. I'm surprised at your comments.
One of the other things that attorneys said, I wanted to address that too, was the issue of equal treatment. And someone, people keep saying, well, why did the health department all of a sudden, two years ago, start, you know, doing this? Well, truthfully, for thirteen years, I've been after this process, because that's my role, that's my responsibility, that's what I have to do. And for various reasons, it's gotten pushed aside and not done. And yet, there are people in the last two years where we've had to require them to tie into sanitary sewers on Route 113 and Route 58, based on a sewer project. That's what equal treatment, from my perspective, is all about. I have to treat the people on 113 the same as I treat the people on Obolyn Road. Or if Liria Township gets sewers, which we hope they do, and those people will have to tie in. That's what equal treatment is. I think we're getting, we're micromanaging this without realizing that this is all about the county. It's about not only the future, or excuse me, it's not about all the past. And we like to talk about the mistakes that were made in the past. But I think, from a standpoint of the health department and getting people to take care of this problem, we try to cooperate, trying to work in some sort of way that is the least painful for people. But I think, some of the discussions I've heard, I can see the next sewer project that needs to go in. We've created tremendous problems for ourselves if we follow some of the advice that's been given. I should, I guess I shouldn't be saying that as a sanitary, but as a citizen I do. I live in Amherst Township, and I understand that. And so-
Can we vote on this, Madam Chair?
Okay, I'm sorry.
We can, there's still another-
You talk about equal treatment from the health department. I lived ten years of it. Don't tell me about equal treatment from them.
Mrs. Vacy, I see two other people who would like to speak. I think with respect to them, that we should allow them. David Urick, Amherst Township trustee.
Yes. Just briefly, I know, we've probably covered most or all of the points. My number one concern is that if the project isn't approved, if it doesn't go through, it's the health department versus the people, the health department says you have to tap in, then they're liable for a lump sum and they either have to come up with the money or find a way to finance it. But they're going to have to come up with that five thousand-some dollars. And this is just for the assessment, not to bring it to their house, but just for the assessment. They're going to have to come up with that money right away. The advantage to doing a lateral project is it then becomes an accessible project, which means it can be put on the taxes for twenty years. And whereas, yes, it is a hardship, it's better or easier than having to come up with five thousand dollars right away, you can at least come up with it over twenty years. And that's my number one concern. I'm afraid that there are individuals who would have difficulty or would be impossible, that they wouldn't be able to come up with a lump sum right now, that would put them in an awkward position and it could cause them duress or possibly having to sell out. And I don't think that that is right. Also, to reiterate, I know that, you know, the Obolyn Road line was put in by the county as a quota county project years ago. It was to service the airport. I think that makes that project unique in any consideration that the county could give that as far as funding, even if it's kicking in something towards some of the fees, I believe, that are involved on that, like some of the capital improvement fees, even if it's twenty-five dollars a tap or something like that. Anything that could be kicked in would be better than nothing. And, you know, if the line could be deemed inaccessible, I'd be the happiest person in the room. But, you know, right now, the question is, which way would you like this to go? You're looking at the lesser of two evils and if it were to go, I would like to see it go as something that could be accessible and paid over twenty years, rather than something that would have to come up due immediately.
Correct, because if we voted down today, then it's not accessible and the people have to come up with it and it'll put them in a worse shape, correct? That's what you're saying?
It may or may not, you can't say it's not accessible.
No, no, when I say accessible, um-
Accessible.
Accessible, thank you.
Yeah, it's a non-accessible item, it's due lump sum. You got to, you're getting the service payment due upon receipt, I guess.
Well, the county's out of it. It's just basically the health department and the people.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments.
And from what I've heard from the township trustees, is they're supporting this project. All three, I've said that you guys have signed an agreement with the health department. We're not signed it, but you guys have worked out an agreement in-
Worked out and writing up, if not an agreement, a procedure, how this would be handled, how the tap-ins would be handled.
Right.
And part of it is the seven-year deal with, if you're under economic duress.
Correct.
But you have to maintain your system, you have to pay for the inspection, et cetera, et cetera.
And right now where we're at with the Amherst Township project is whether or not to accept the seventy-five thousand or try to see if we can offset those costs even more, which is how I felt, that's how we left it, when it was like, I'd rather see the four twenty-seven instead of the seventy-five. And that's kind of where I think, that's where we're at.
Anything, you kick in eighty dollars and, you know, you save everybody a buck, that's where I'm at too.
That's my understanding of the Amherst-
Amherst line, yes.
Thank you, David. The next gentleman.
Yes, I'm John Sable, a registered sanitaryian with the Lorraine County Health Department. I'm in charge of this particular area of Carlisle Township. Some of the things that were mentioned today in terms of agreements by the county commissioners, a couple, or someone mentioning that they weren't for the sewer run. I do have an agreement on May 12th of two thousand that was signed and that mentions about the sewers coming through and agreement that the sewers could run through there and that the county and/or user shall be responsible for providing, installing, constructing, maintaining, repairing, replacing, or removing any and all connections, lateral, sewers, pipes, lines, or other means. This was signed by the Board of County Commissioners of Lorraine County, President Mary Jo Vasey and E.C. Blair. So there was knowledge of the sewers. So there was knowledge of the sewer system going in. There was knowledge that they were going to take some responsibility as well as the users. I don't know if the users were here at the time for the meeting, but that they were going to maintain or install laterals. The accessibility is not in question here. There are sewers there. Aleria and the county signed agreements that said that the county of the Carlisle people can tie into those sewers. They're available, they're accessible, accessible, they could be done. The time constraints and stuff like that, you know, one of the attorneys said here that he didn't have the same opportunity. Health department's been there, we've been working on this for years. Certainly, you can call, they know that we're, either the county prosecutor or obviously Mr. Keresy that works for us is available for that information. Well, that was the big one. I have nothing else they had to it.
So you'd be, you'd be agreeable to at least sitting down and talking and getting into a similar agreement?
That, he'll have to deal with the health commissioner and the prosecutor.
Okay.
I'm sure there's no disagreement with that.
Okay, that's nice to hear.
Thank you, John. Next lady.
Good morning, I'm Martha Burrows, 44780 Middle Ridge Road. And I'd like to address, you know, the option of financial assistance. I know that when you have people coming to you who have already tapped in and they say, well, if those people get assistance, we want assistance, too. My thought on that is, and, you know, I hate to go against neighbors, I understand a buck is a buck, but I know that the gentleman that was here, it was a transfer of property. And, and how David and Mary Jo were saying, you know, we had that initial agreement, which luckily, Mr. Carey had the forethought to get something in writing and we'll get it to you. So I understand the offer was because of it just not being fair, you know, from our, from the original agreement that we had for what was trying, what they're trying to do now. So, you know, if I was in your shoes and you had tons of money, yes, be nice to everybody, but I know this sounds terrible and my neighbors will think, but I'm just saying that if people attached to the sewer, why did they attach to the sewer? Was it the transfer of property? Was it that they were starting to have trouble with their septic tanks? You know, you just can't say that everybody that comes and says, gee, we already did it, you know, what the, you know, what was the reason? Is it, you know, did it, is it part of that original agreement, which we all knew? If eventually something happened with the septic tanks, we would have to attach to the sewer. If we sold our homes or transferred the property, we knew that. And that's kind of my point, so that maybe it makes whatever finance would possibly be available go further. I know if David bought a car two months ago and then Mary Jo got the same car and had a lot more goodies on it and was paying a lot less for it, you know, he made his deal then. And I'm just saying that the rest of us have stuck to the original agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. And sir?
Yes, John Abraham, I spoke earlier. Following up with what this lady said, and Mr. Cordez and Mrs. Vassi has stated, well, if we go along and we, we pay for the laterals for these folks, those who have tied in, the 92 in Amherst Township, we're going to have to go back and reimburse, well, that is false. The people that have tied in, the 92 have tied in, could not get health permits because the sewer was there. I mean, they could not get a septic permit or an irrigation system permit because the sewer was out front. So most of those 92 connections were made because they were new houses and/or transfers. And that was part of the agreement way back when the thing was put in. But, so, that argument is void. We're talking about the ones who have to tie in, both in Carlisle and Amherst Township. So, once again, going back to fairness here, because these projects were approved by the county commissioners and the fact that the latter, the law was not followed, the laterals were not put in, the owners were not made to tie in at the time, I think that responsibility lies with the commissioners to come forward with at least a portion of the finances of this. And that's why I suggested fairness would be for them to pay for the laterals, the homeowners to pay the rest of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, for clarification, point, I never said you had to reimburse those people. I simply said that I would believe that they would come forward and ask for reimbursement. So I did not say that that had to occur. So I think the gentleman has misrepresented my statement. And as far as how you put a sewer in, I don't think there's any legal guidelines in what a sewer is comprised of when it goes in. So while it may not have been the best expenditure of resources, the most efficient way to be done, I don't think there was any illegal activity with, where the sewer was put in. There probably was a much better way, but it wasn't an illegal way. Thank you.
Jerry?
Yeah, just some very short comments. This board, the commissioners don't have to worry about setting a precedent because if the commissioners from now on, when they put in the main sewer, put the laterals to the property line, this Amherst situation or Carlisle will never come up again.
I'd just like to say one thing, so you know, and I know you know, but it sounds good to gloss it over. The commissioners did not put that sewer in on East River Road. That was put in by the city of Aleria.
The second point is when the city of Aleria and the commissioners worked out that agreement, the Carlisle trustees weren't directly parties, although they had some input, but the residents, my clients, had no notice, were not involved in that, and never got to negotiate a position, okay, concerning their interests. They were left out of the process. As far as a proposal, if there's a motion going to be made, I request that a motion will be made to this extent, that, that the commissioners fund 100% of the project if no agreement is worked out between the trustee, the residents, and, and the health board. If an agreement is worked out, then we'll go along with the proposal that they'll be assessed $2,500. Last point is, as far as working with the board of health or having a proposal, maybe somebody could come up and give me a little more assurance that they will negotiate in good faith to the extent that they've done with Amherst as far as working out an agreement. Thank you.
Hey, Jerry, can I ask you a question, Gerald? You said that you want, you would like us to pay 100% of it, and if there's an agreement, go back to 50% of it?
If we work on an agreement where we get to seven years, yes. We'll go to the $2,500. Or your option is to vote no, okay?
No, I know, I understand.
You can not proceed with it, too, if that
What makes you think that that seven years is going to be binding?
Well, if the health board is a party to it and we get a contractual agreement with them, obviously it can't bind the Ohio EPA.
But that's not a contract.
And it can't bind, bind the US EPA, and I know that. But, but it at least gives us assurance that unless one of those bodies come on them and forces them to do something, they're not going to do it self-initiated.
But you know
As long as we meet those conditions of getting them tested, if they fail, they can correct them, if they don't correct them, they have to tie in. That's fair and reasonable because that addresses the health concerns that the EPA's would be involved in as far as
But you know that the health department works with EPA. And all it would take was the word, come on over here, EPA, and they'll be here.
Well, if they do that, then we can deal with the, you know
Prove that they've done it.
That's a risk. Yeah.
Jerry, do you have comments?
A couple of things. I certainly don't think the idea of allowing Mr. Phillips to meet with the health department and get straightened out whether or not the health department would be willing to make a similar pledge as they did in Amherst, I don't think that's a bad idea. So certainly, we could, we could do that. Secondly, I heard something about this Carey property and agreement. There was no objection or anything presented on that, but if there is such an agreement, that may have some impact, so you may want to wait to get that agreement and see what that says and see what impact that has on the Amherst.
Even though the public hearing was closed?
Technically, it's closed, and technically, they didn't file an objection. I'm just indicating you may want to wait and see what that is and what it, what it says.
I think from listening to everybody in Amherst Township at those public hearing rooms, I think there were promises made, so, and the fact that there's a letter floating around, you know, whether or not that's there or not, we haven't seen it yet, so. It's been consistent. I don't think, I think you're right, I don't think we can make a, I don't know how we can help out Mr. Phillips with the health department. I think that was the issue I had about 40 minutes ago when we talked about that, whether or not I can pass a resolution, you know, with contingencies on it. So I think it gets right back down to how much money are we going to help assist these people? Are we going to say no and let them go on their own? Are we going to help them out a little bit? Or are we going to assess them? That's pretty clear.
And when you originally spoke, I also said I thought there were two issues with the Carlisle, I'm sorry, two issues I thought there were, and with the Carlisle, three issues.
Correct.
And the two issues are, one, are we going to authorize proceeding with the project? We can do that without authorizing money. The second question is, are we going to authorize monetary participation in Carlisle? Before we decide either of those things, are we going to accept the recommendation, I want to say recommendation, the request of the Carlisle Township trustees that we look at a proposal with Lorco? And if we do that, then we automatically reject the proposal as presented.
Well, Madam Chair, the Amherst Township issue, that has been presented to us with approval from the trustees. I think that would be an easier issue to deal with first.
I agree.
The trustees are asking for the sewers, it's just a matter of how much. I think you proposed at that day $75,000.
Well, I was willing to go to $75,000.
Correct, I was at $427,000, and Commissioner Vassi said she wanted to look at the funds. You wanted to help offset the request of the Amherst Township trustees, Commissioner?
It may be the request of the township trustees, but I want to hear from the people. How many people are here from Amherst? All right, how many of you want us to go along with what the trustees have proposed?
That's insane, well, let me make it clear, how's that? Do you guys want us to just say no and let you guys go on your own way? Say I know, I know what you guys want to do. Okay, let me, I don't like this voting thing, so let's do this.
I don't either.
I think the township trustees are asking for $75,000, or they've negotiated, I think Mr. Lynch thinks it's $175. No, 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 hear me out, hear me out, I'm at $427,000.
You sound like an auctioneer.
Can I get $400,000, $400,000 from Mary Jo? It's coming right back to you, Commissioner. I mean, can you, I mean, can you The township trustees have said they want, that it needs to be tied in. They've requested it, they've come to terms between $75,000 and $175,000. Commissioner Blair is willing to go $75,000, I'm willing to go $427,000. Commissioner Vassi, would you like?
Anything, if we give them money, it's going to put those people in a position where they have to tie in, and they're going to be assessed, and it's going to increase their taxes, so that is their, it's going to be their problem from what I hear.
But they already have that.
Yep. Well, they don't have it yet, but they will.
Right. So can we help?
Yeah.
How much?
I'll go to $75,000. What are you going to do with the other Carlisle now?
No, we're not, we haven't made a motion or passed
Yeah, but if you're going to give it to them, are you giving it to Carlisle?
We're still
Well, I want to know before I make a decision, before I vote on it.
Well, they're
The second one, they haven't even have a contract with the health department. Gerald Phillips says that he'd like to have 100% of it, he's willing to go 50%. He represents the residents. I think there's another, there's a different issue with that one than there is with this one. The trustees are the ones that are, that have worked out an agreement with the health department. It's a matter of $75,000 or more, and if that's
And it's a matter of taking the health department's word that they'll wait seven years?
No, it's in writing, they've given a letter in writing there.
Carlisle doesn't have that, let's just
I understand that, but it depends on how that is written, too. Let me see yours. I've got my, tucked mine away in here.
Which one's that?
The letter from the health department.
Commissioner Bassey, I'm pretty comfortable with the letter from the health department. I participated in a lot of those meetings with Neil and the health department.
You got it?
You know, I'm comfortable, you know, indicating you that that's a pretty binding letter and that the terms and conditions have, there's been a meeting in mind on those terms and conditions.
I've had some, you know, as everybody knows, had bad experiences with the health department, so I really maybe shouldn't even vote on this because I am biased and I don't trust them. Where's the seven years in here?
What one are you reading?
I don't know, Lorain County General Health Department District.
Give her the right one, Teresa.
Right here it says 2012. It didn't say seven, it just said you got it till June 1st, 2012.
Regardless of the economics, Commissioner, it's a good, it's a good document with the health department.
But it says for up to
Well, because
June 2012, up to.
It says
So what happens in between?
I can respond to that for you. There's certain parameters that have to be met, and if those parameters are met, then you have up to this date. If they're not met, then there's certain trigger points within the agreement that would, would require something different. It's a compliance document is what it really is. And if you comply with the terms and conditions of the document, you have until that date certain.
That's not the way I read it.
Okay.
Goes right back to day one, which is the agreements between the trustees, the residents, and the health department. We're here for financial aid. How much are we given? My auctioneer days, sounds like they died.
It's up to you, Billy, I already said what I was doing. Excuse me?
It's up to you.
$75,000 was what I originally said.
That's what I agree on.
I moved that we approve project number 109 in Amherst Township and that the county contribute $75,000 towards this project. I want to take it in two steps. There's a motion due to lack of second? Motion dies?
I make a motion to approve sewer district 109 with the county participating in $427,000.
Due to lack of a second, that motion died.
Want to try it?
Want to try this one, be sure?
No, one at a time.
No, absolutely not, we saw this one first. We still might salvage it.
Not doing anything.
You said you wanted to go 75, or now you don't want to?
No, because I still, I'm telling you where I stand. I've said it repeatedly, and I'm not going to repeat it again.
What happens, Jerry, if we, this dies today?
Project doesn't go forward.
What's that?
Project
Send out the bills for the sewers. My neighbors never got a bill for almost a year. Last week, they got their bills, $400, $500. Were you supposed to come up with that? Now they're saying that on Oberlin Road, we may be assessed up to $50 a month for the sewer. Who can afford that? I can't.
Jerry?
Your question was, we have had two motions, both have Your question was, we have had two motions, both have died, if a motion doesn't pass, the project does not go forward.
Can I come back up in the next week or two?
We'd have to give out notices and things.
I know, but we don't have to serve from.
But these people.
At some point in time.
But the people would have to be re-notified. This wasn't a public hearing, no.
I know, but if you, if the project dies, if the project dies, there could be some challenge that once it dies, that you have to start over again with a new public hearing. So you can delay the decision, you can table it, you can shelve it whatever you want, so you can revisit it again, but if it, I think, and Jerry, I'm, this is your area, but if it completely dies, there could be a challenge that we have to start over.
If it's voted down, let's vote it down.
I know, how about, is Neil here? Did you leave yet? I'm just, you don't have to stand up, I'm just saying, you know, if this thing dies, the trustees are all here, and that's not, that's not what the trustees want, correct? But let me tell you, I know the residents don't either, but if it, let me tell you something, I don't want to support the seventy-five thousand. But it sounds like here today, that's all you're going to get. Now, if I sit here and hold my ground at four twenty-seven, and it isn't going anywhere, then you're done holding the bag, and you guys are all on your own, and that's not the way to go either.
Well, let me give you another option.
Thank you.
Amherst Township has not gone out and solicited legal services. The trustees and the residents have tried to work with the county, work with the Health Department, so nobody spent any money, taxpayer money, for legal services. Because of that, and yet I hear the legal representative for Carlyle talking about with a similar agreement that we worked out in good faith with the Health Department, they go for half, perhaps you consider at least half. That's still going to be a burden for some of the residents, I recognize that, but it's going to be based on Wayne Bishop of Katie McCartney and Associates, for half of that, we're talking roughly two hundred and twenty-five dollars a year in assessment, correct? And then hopefully, their system doesn't fail, and the Health Department, I trust the Health Department's going to buy by that letter of understanding. So if you could at least now come up with a third motion of going half, and not knowing what you're doing with Carlyle, you're kind of right back to the same situation they're at before. I do recognize that for the Amherst Township situation, there are some unique situations there, why that line was there, I don't have to have the residents shout it out again, we all know why it was put in there. So if the commissioners can agree to half, you can avoid spending more money, sending out notices, more of our time on this, get this project done, the engineers can go through and start digging the holes and getting the laterals in, and you can work with Carlyle on there to buy them some time to work with the Health Department. Sometimes it's easier to work within the system.
Thank you for your comments, Neil. You were even very, I don't know what the term I want to use is, you were very eloquent before you became a trustee. For the benefit of those in the audience, Mr. Lynch was a frequent visitor to the then Carlyle, or excuse me, then Board of Commissioners when we had some issues which were important to him, and I think a couple of us on the board told him he ought to run for Township Trustee, which he did, to the benefit of Amherst Township. I will move that we approve this project, and that the Board of Commissioners contribute two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, which is one-half of the project.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
I'm going to extend because I don't trust the Health Department.
Motion carried. That takes care of the project one oh nine under old business. Now we'll go back to project one oh eight.
Yeah, I'd like to make a similar motion to approve one oh eight, and I don't have the number, but it's one hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred, which is fifty percent of the total project, and you're going to have to work on getting your own agreement. Okay? That's my motion. Wait a minute, there's a motion on the floor.
Well, I just want to explain the consequences that you're putting me in in connection with the representation.
Okay, then I'll back up and just say I'll make a motion to approve.
I have to exercise certain legal rights, unless we reach an agreement within a certain period, I have to exercise those, and I would prefer to avoid litigation if we could get the fifty percent, but I have a time limit, so I just want to apprise you of that.
I don't understand your comments, Jerry.
Well, if you pass a motion to proceed, and with fifty percent, then we have to make a decision with absolute agreement with the Health and the Enforcement within ten days, either appeal that decision, go to court or not. So I have a ten-day time clock that's proceeding, and that does not give me enough time to work out an agreement with the Health Board.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, would you rather have us hold this?
I would prefer that. And two weeks, I think would be more sufficient time to meet with the trustees and the Health Board.
Is that the eighteenth? Okay, then November eighteenth would be fine. Is that okay, Madam Chair? We hold this till November eighteenth, because we're not here in two weeks, it's Veterans Day.
That's fine.
Just off the selection of that student government day, and I've got all those public hearings except for that day also.
It'd be great for the kids to see this kind of stuff.
Are we, do we have to, Jerry? Jerry, in us.
Well, we'll have to send out notices.
Do we have to re-notify these people?
We will, we will, on behalf of my forty-two property owners, we'll waive notice.
Do you have all forty-two?
The forty-two on Exhibit A, yes, we'll waive notice so you don't have to send notices out to those forty-two.
Jack, how many are on the line? How many? I think we can see our way clear to do any other, nine.
But we'll waive notice to alleviate the burden on the.
We'll get together on the list, and we'll notify.
Jerry, and we send the appropriate documents we want to write out, sign.
Can I move to table this till November eighteenth?
Second. Any further discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vasey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
It's been tabled. So I guess the board is going to render a decision on the East River Project number one oh eight on November the eighteenth. Right, okay. Thank you for your attendance. Back to the agenda, is there any new business to come before the board?
None.
Board Correspondents.
I move the reading be waived.
Sorry?
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vasey?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody who wants to speak to us?
We'll take a break since everybody's.
David Ashenhurst.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for a very instructive day of democracy in action. I continue, David Ashenhurst, East College Street, Oberlin. I continue to appreciate the evolution of this meeting in combination with the agenda, including the Board Correspondents appearing on the county's website, and the videotape, which is consistently available and broadcast the week directly after this meeting, and a kind of a collectively into a weekly public update on the status of the public agenda in Lorraine County. I've been coming to these for about four years now, and it's a pleasure to see that evolution, and I think it really is, for the people we know are watching it, whether they're insomniacs or not, that it is, it is a very instructive series of insights into what's going on in Lorraine County. On that basis, I wanted to remind everybody that the last of this series of free instructions on public records and public, and sunshine law in Ohio is going to be held October twenty-seventh, next Wednesday, at the Cleveland Police Academy, thirteen hundred, I believe, Chester Avenue in Cleveland, from noon to three. And I would, I would like to, I'd like to reflect on a couple of things. First, if Bob Kish were still alive, we'd be getting three minutes of real political theater this week and next. I'm sorry, I just have November second instead of an Uncle Sam suit or something like that. I'm reminded that in this, in these meetings, there is partisan, there's bipartisan or tripartisan, there's nonpartisan, and there are sort of good government things that go on in all these meetings, and as I say, it's been a real privilege to witness all that. In the context of both kind of good government and the recognition that we have an approaching political contest that it, that will be partisan coming up, and I, during one of the times I was out of the room during the recent discussions, I picked up a flyer that's available on your desk in the Commissioner's office, from our Secretary of State, asking us to get ready for Election Day, and saying that if you have any questions about your voting rights or Ohio's election laws and procedures, visit our website or call your county Board of Elections, and I encourage you to call, not wait until Election Day, call now. Our county Board of Elections, as I understand it from Commissioner Vasey's booklet about county offices, that phone number is three two six five nine hundred. But I would also ask the Commissioners, simply as the acceptor of reports from all of its county boards and commissions during the course of the year, if you might request that on your agenda next week, if we could hear from the Director of our Board of Elections and just find out how the preparations have gone and are going for the election day that is to occur after the time that next week's meeting is broadcast on the air, and that you just hear from your Director of your Board of Elections, and perhaps from your legal advisor as to the status or the anticipation of any challenges, so that on November second, we all vote, and whoever we're voting for, our vote counts. So, and also, I will be happy to see any of the Commissioners and other public officials show up at our Lorraine County Community Alliance Summit tomorrow at Lorraine County Community College. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Jerry, I saw you were just dying to say something.
We anticipate challenges.
Have we been getting notices already?
Also, for clarification purposes, and I know you know this, but I'm not sure it was stated correctly, it's not our Director of the Board of Elections, the, she works for an independent board that we have no involvement on how that board is constituted for Lorraine County. So it could, there could be a request made, but again, there is no, other than providing funding to them, there's not a lot of overseeing of that particular.
And I fully understand that, but I guess, and I was wondering about that, but I was also thinking, in the, in the funding of it, presumably, you're the ones who would be asked to provide optical scan cards versus punt cards or election stuff, is that not correct, that that's?
No, not necessarily, it's not correct.
Okay.
A lot of the, we had to provide some additional funding because of the volume going on at the Board of Elections, and I've been in quite a few discussions with them concerning that, but those type of decisions are made by the Board, plus they have other, they have other outside funding sources, and that's why we weren't involved in the selection of the type of voting equipment that was going to be used here in Lorraine County. This Board had no ability to participate in that decision-making process, and as of right now, my understanding is that we will not be challenged to, and hopefully, not challenged in the future, to provide that funding.
I would love to be, I would love to fund that project.
It suggests that the Ohio Secretary of State has suggested that residents call their county Board of Elections if they have questions about.
Right, and that's because the Board of Elections technically, vis a vis certain regulations, works for the Secretary of State.
They do not work for the county Commissioners?
No.
And we just provide, what, fifty percent or a percentage, or?
Fifty percent.
I don't know how much.
Actually, they're a general funding.
Well, if you could ask her, her, half of her annual report.
Well, and I wasn't.
That it might be given next week, it seems to me a timely time to have such a report.
That's pretty good, David, I do appreciate the humor, I always like it myself, but I'm just, just because sometimes we say things in here, and we don't give a complete clarification, people watch the video, and they're not, they're not receiving the proper message. We, obviously, we have the power of the purse strings over the Board of Elections, and even that power is, is not without limits, since this county's been sued by its Board of Elections on previous occasions. So clearly, we can make a request, but they're really not in our chain of command, nor are they in our chain of responsibility either.
And while we're talking about the Board of Elections, in case anybody doesn't know, and I have been asked this, where is the Board of Elections located? They're on the corner of North Ridge Road and Clinton Avenue, in that lovely new building.
We do get to buy them a building, though.
No one asked for that comment.
I retract it, sorry.
Thank you. All right, anybody else in the audience who would like to talk to us this morning? While you're still here, Bill, I don't know if John's already left, I want to thank you for coming. Okay, thank you both for coming. Appreciate your attendance this morning, I think it was helpful. You know, it's easy to criticize someone when they're not here, but when you're here, it's a little bit more difficult, and it puts a face to an issue, and I appreciate your being here. Okay, I think Mr. Cordes wants to talk to us about some personnel issues, so I move that we go into executive session for that purpose.
Second.
Aye. Ms. Blair? Ms. Vasey? Mr. Moore?